I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Here.
Here.
Sorry.
Here.
I'm Bob Posowski.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Sometime there.
Just looking at it.
That's fantastic.
Let the hat back on.
What is that guy? Yeah.
Diagneto.
Uh, let's see.
Who's this one? You'll never know who you are.
No, 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 no. I can't do that. Approval of the gin. I move where approved you again.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Discussion, okay. In the aftermath, in lieu of, in the aftermath of last meeting, I feel that we should install a policy that when people want to say something, they may say something under people with a time limit of anywhere between three to five minutes. Don't know what that's gonna be. And they can state their case or argue what they're gonna argue under that time limit, and then we can say thank you, and we can discuss that later on in the agenda without
Dragging it out.
The oral nasty mayor getting mad is what I'm after, I guess. We've always tried- Time run as good as the mayor gets nasty. We've always tried to run this place, and I say the collective "we", in a manner that allows everybody to say what they wanna say, and we discuss it, and maybe come to a, this. But I think after last week's, two weeks ago's performance, I think that's- He wasn't here to discuss. Uh, so I would like the policy to be adopted to reflect that. I agree with that.
So we need to add that on your new business?
Yes, please. That was my point, that whole thing.
So you need to amend your-
So, so- By amendment, I'm going to-
Great.
To take into consideration Jim's request.
Well, still second that.
Moving seconded that the agenda be approved with the addition of- As amended. As amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Important course lines. We have two. Letter from Larry Cassidy requesting relief for a water leak, and a letter from Peter Schottis asking for more time to comply with nuisance violation notice. And the question of meaning, you can digest those two, and we'll look at those under your business also. All right, people? You know, minutes of the previous meeting, please.
I will accept the minutes of the previous meeting as written.
Second. Moving seconded that minutes from the previous meeting be accepted as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports. Scott is on vacation. And I can tell you that I shut the wells down last Thursday. Ran out of chlorine, which was the plan. And when Scott gets back, he may get some more chlorine and pump the rest of it. We have just a little bit to go yet. Uh, I don't see any water pumping, popping out of the ground, and the lift station has just been cleaned, and it doesn't smell like that when we opened the door, so we're in pretty good shape, man.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
And the, and the Galvett Park is apparently declared war on pine cones. I don't see it.
They're there.
They're there?
I was there Sunday when they're-
She picks the pine cones up, I think.
Who?
Galvett Park.
Or-
Oh.
There's a little bit though. How the repair going at the road?
Uh, repair of the road.
Under the road, the pine cones.
Oh, that went fine. Uh, fact I didn't, did you talk to Scott? You talked to him Friday before he left?
He was talking about them sleeping it, but I don't know if they've done it yet.
Cause they were there and had their tents set up, and I think, I think that's all done. I think so too. Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were confident they were gonna be able to sleep it.
Yeah.
Repair it.
No one knows guys, it's done and we're good. All right? Sure. All right.
There's nothing reports for June and July there. And then I'm gonna be gone, I'm gonna be closed on Thursday. Cause I'm going to love my work for the budget conference up there.
Uh, closed or extended?
Closed.
Okay.
That says Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
Which Thursday?
Your turn.
Door's Thursday.
Door's not Thursday.
She's going to a conference.
Oh.
So the office is closed.
Oh. She's just in town. Yeah.
You heard that?
You'd be out of time.
Money he earned.
Mr. Fire.
Mr. Bureau Counsel, uh, Paul, I actually, we had this last meeting, I was actually working and we were kinda busy there, so bringing you up to date. So, we had, for the month of July, we had two calls for service. Uh, we also installed our employee at the burn ban. We've had no calls, no complaints, no anybody trying to, try to get around that. I went to my normal people that tried to, talked to them face to face, and said, hey, no. And they understood, and they agreed to be nice. So, so far this month, we've had two calls for service. So, we're, you know, not busy, but-
Kidcom's got it, then.
They're getting there. They've got a couple. Darnine actually called over to me and says, hey, they made a mistake. She goes, I've got it. I said, okay. Uh, and we're working on some other issues, but nothing drastic.
Cool.
So.
Great. Thank you, sir. So, next on the report list is our newly alleged reporter. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Norm McCallan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, lots of stuff going on at the police department. Uh, I missed the last meeting cause of the national night out. That is a barbecue that the police department hosts every first Tuesday of every August. And that is just a open house barbecue. We normally have it at Skateboard Park, but it was under construction, so of course we moved it to White Park. We actually have a larger turnout at White Park, so maybe that will be our, our new location to be doing that. We had a lot of outside agencies come to be with us this year. Uh, the sheriff's office brought a lot of their search and rescue equipment, and the kids got their ride around in their four wheeler and rescue toboggan and stuff. That was pretty, pretty fun, so it was a good event for them. Uh, but we also had the Forest Service brought people in the brush truck. Clayell Fire, uh, Hospital District Two with the ambulance, Roslyn Fire, and even District Seven showed up. So we, we had a good turnout. I cooked about eighty burgers and fifty hot dogs. On the hottest day of the year I might have. But, no, it was a good turnout, and I think it'll be just bigger and better at, at White Park. So that'll probably be our new location. There was some comment about having parks at each of the different cities to include Roslyn and South Dallas Park, which of course we would be open to. Depending on your park's rental, if it's available that Tuesday, or if you would want it over here. So, we're open to that as well. Uh, the next fundraiser we're going to is this, uh, the twenty-third. It's called Cops on Top. The Ellsberg Police Department, for a number of years, have done a fundraiser for Special Olympics. Fred Meyer is the partnership business with them. And what they do is they put police officers on top of the roof all day and, uh, with fishing poles, and they lower goodie bags to kids, and they put donations in a bag and bill them up. Just a fun thing. And then they have a lot of static displays throughout the parking lot. And Ellsberg PD has opened that up to all enforcement agencies this year. So we're gonna be able to participate in that. And one of the things is, uh, they wanna at least get one police car from each agency so the kids can climb around and play with them. And we were lucky enough to get a new used car from the police department. That's a whole nother story, but we got a smoking deal on a demo car from a retailer. Where we normally buy used surplus from another city entity. This is a private, um, business that sells police equipment, and he had a car all set up as a demo. They're looking at getting a brand new model for their business, so they sold us their old one, so we got a really good deal on that. So that car will be the one on display down at Fred Meyer, if you happen to be down there Friday the twenty-third. Follow up on the cases, we had, last time I was here, we talked about a felony firearms assault that happened in South Clayell. That case has come to a resolution with a guilty plea. There's currently an additional felony sexual assault that's, uh, that case is still in progress for here. So it is taking more time, so I don't know if you've got your reports, you're seeing extra hours. That's gonna be part of that. And then another thing happened in South Clayell is an order violation. That was a mandatory arrest situation, so that resulted in a booking for South Clayell, so you'll see that as well. The police department itself, we're looking at getting some bids for maintenance on the building. So hopefully we can keep the roof from leaking this year, and some siding work for the water damage that's, that's happened there. So that's still in progress. Our training program's getting beefed up. We have an officer selected to go to a defensive track, defensive tactics instructor course. That'll happen by the end of the year. That was facilitated through our normal training funds, plus we, uh, we see some grant monies uh, from the Law and Justice Council to, to help support that. And, uh, with me moving into the chief's position, that created other instructor needs throughout the department, cause I'll need to be replaced for the, as a field training officer, the firearms instructor, and the evidence technician, so all that trickled down. Still, and of course, we'll be promoting another corporal and sergeant again once we're back up to full staff. So all those training things have to be done to replace my old job duties. Um, so that'll be, that'll be good. And then finally, yeah, we have a job opening, so if you hear of, if somebody interests, please send them my way.
Sure.
Okay.
That's it.
Question. It's two twenty-five.
Two-two-five is, is our only reserve officer. And things were shorthanded, the city has allowed us to bring Storch on Fridays and Saturdays to help with shift coverage. It's just a six hour shift each, each night.
I just heard the call sign, the call numbers, and I thought, okay, who said that?
Yeah, that's, that's our drawing.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. It's good, good to hear all of that information. And I noticed the speed sign out here and there and the other place.
Mm-hmm. We try and get that out every day. We get a lot of call volume from the speed trailer.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, it can't be everywhere at once, but-
But it's somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed it's probably not more presence, it's just more visible presence over here. Okay, there's, there's a police car that goes up and down the different street almost every day. I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Aaron?
I have nothing to report.
Lending permission, we have nothing. Mini? We have a surplus fire truck that we need to do something with. The fifty-three Ford. Are we allowed to do that? Well, that's a good question. Put it up for bids and sell it? Is there a way we can get around that? Doesn't have to go to state surplus, or that? No, I don't think that exists anymore. I don't know. We can just sell it if we want to.
Have to go, probably book bid for it.
Was that a, that wasn't an operating truck in town, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Was it?
Yeah. That is, they built that, the fire department put most of that together in nineteen fifty-two or fifty-three. Cliff Filio and Cliff McGuire and that bunch of guys. And that was in service into the seventies. And then we got the Ford. No, Ford of the Kenworth first, don't remember which. Anyway, that's the truck that we raised. And it was, it was, I was in Troy at a good guy's car show. He says, this is a report. And I'm, well, I was at the drag strip Friday night. Actually, we're sitting there in the parking lot where they allowed the participants to park at the drag strip. And I'm looking at this old thirty-eight Ford sitting across the parking lot from me, and it said, it said Roy Farthing parked on the door. So I wandered over there and told that guy that he was driving a loser's truck, cause we used to beat those guys all the time. Riding up his old day, huh? Yeah. Anyway. The place that was stored isn't available any longer. And the place that's stored now is probably not gonna be available much longer, so the town has no place to keep it, and actually no reason to keep it other than sentimental value, and most of those people are not here anymore. Huh? They won't fit in your garage? No.
If we were to find a more permanent storage location, I'd hate to see it go away, because it's tradition, it's us. I'd love to see it in the parades being used more. Doesn't cost us any money.
Well, yeah. But then that's gotta go on with somebody to, to take care of it. Good last name. Sam and I cleaned it up and took it to get a screen room. In other words, it's down at the hangar, it's not hurting anything, but it's not gonna be a permanent situation.
Couldn't we give the fire department just a little bit of time to look at some options, or?
Yeah.
Is, is that possible?
Yeah.
I, I'm not meaning like a year or anything.
I'm, I'm open to suggestions, you know.
Couple months anyway?
It's been laying around for-
It has been.
Wow. Eighties, nineties, twenty or thirty years. And it's, uh, it's actually a pretty nice old truck. Anyway.
It'll bring a nice little chunk of change.
Well.
But.
You know. Almost could have self-talked to the buyer. I know.
I think if the fire department could come up with something to keep it, and to keep it up, and, and to keep it out in the public at times for the parades or whatnot, I think that would be worth the effort. It would be a damn shame to lose it.
And, you know, I think it would be good for the fire department to, to have something like that to fill the list.
Well, every, every department in Effer County has that signature old fire truck that they use for something. Wheezy is ours. I mean, that's, that's-
You know, I'd love the curb wheels and straight pipes.
That's right.
But somebody's gonna have to lock it and take care of it, and boil it, and do a little hand put on it, instead of it just sitting where it gets done.
Well, and that's, that's-
But again, it's, it's gonna cause the city a dying. You know, so if, if we can find out a, a means to take care of that, I'd like to have that opportunity.
And it's not like it's-
Some of us would like to see it.
It's not like, it's not, we had to take it care of, no, we had nice spots, set the mouse traps and put stuff out and wipe it off every once in a while. And started after they found a kill switch. All right, so anyway, it's something to do.
It was cool to see it up against you.
It was.
It was.
It was very well received.
To see the, the various departments and their old grids that, that was neat.
Did get a nice thank you note to the cabinet and the fire department, department from Cece thanking us for doing that, so.
And you do seem to have a fair time doing it too.
Well, we did. Sure, the few things that we used to do, but, you know. Well. All right. Anybody from the council got anything?
We had our traffic meeting. And they're trying to come up with some good ideas, and right now they're taking any suggestions, so I came back, I told them I'd come back to you guys, and maybe think about it till we have our next council meeting, what you think should happen with South Clayell. Now, I know Madison's considered a truck route, but maybe during the summertime, do we wanna take that off as being a truck route? Uh, or take that off as permanently being, and just have local delivery semi? Cause I know that there's more and more semis going up on the street, and a lot of them are trying to block, miss, saw one truck loading down with hay, trying to miss the scales, so you didn't have to go through the scales. So-
They're gonna do that whether it's shut off or not.
Well, true. But if the county, if we as a city do say that we only wanna have local deliveries, we pass the ordinance and then send it to the county commissioners and see if they'll agree with us on it. But it's, it's up for us to be trying to decide, and then I can go back to our group and say, this is what we would like to see happen. Cause they're trying to send suggestions, and then I guess it can sense us from the commissioners that is, if you send in something worthwhile, we'll try it.
So what's that gonna do with the traffic on Sundays?
Well, it may not do anything, but at least it might take some of the truck traffic off. So, that's, that's the only thing, is that we have a lot of truck traffic, either both ways. I mean, true, you have people that live in South Clayell that drive semi, so it wouldn't affect them, but you know, when you got trucks trying to miss the scales and going up the west side road through our town, our roads aren't made for heavy loads like that, you know, fully loaded hay trucks and stuff like that, so, you know.
So, if Google can allow you, and they're going to, it sounds like they're gonna allow you to erase your personal history, why can't they erase South Clayell Way and West Side Road off their maps?
Well, and that's one of the things of nobody, is that they're trying to figure out, who do they talk to? Because you have to take it off the maps. If they can get onto the maps and see, okay, there's a route that goes through West Side Road and, you know, all those different ways, then people are gonna take it, if traffic's backed up on the freeway. So, um, you know, that's something too, that they're trying to look at, is how do they get in touch with these people that run the maps? So they can take some of these roads and make them local residents only, or something that, that'll fit. Uh, the county's already passed an ordinance saying that semi trucks aren't allowed on county roads from such and such date to September fifteenth, or something like that, October fifteenth. There's a sign just past the old, uh, Iron Horse Inn. But that hasn't stopped the truck traffic, because it's still listed on Google and everywhere else that they can look. So, until they can take it off, so they know they can't go by that route. So, that's some of the things we're up against.
Might be a problem with no solution, until there's a half a dozen more lanes going in both directions.
Yeah, and they're looking at about fifteen years before that.
The White House is going pretty east, and that's where it's gonna stop for-
Yeah.
That's where it's gonna stop, yeah. And then all they're gonna take it to though was Exit eighty-five, and then stop it there. So, so you'll still have backups from eighty-five to Easton. Or to, I mean, Ellsberg. Anyway, that's something to think about.
So, Six Street got pretty busy here a couple of weeks ago too. Well, it did. I think everybody was out watching you wandering your lawn. Yeah, what? Well, I'm a water twice a year.
Goes hand in hand with the one time a year you mow it.
Kinda what I'm about to do again, too. The weeds are getting high enough. I'll be on that picture board here. So, Mr. Chief, any ideas?
Well, I, I notice the problem, obviously I live off West Side Road, so you see all the traffic and all the, everybody's trying to get through. With the signs that say no semis beyond this point, there's nowhere for them to turn around after that sign. So even if they did want to comply, they go past the sign, they've got nowhere to turn around until they hit Golf Course Road, right? So, so I, I see that as problematic. And as far as, um, I have heard some entities getting hold of Google to get them off their suggested route. So when they plug in a new route, they can not have that route show up.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the process is. I just have heard that there's, there's cities petitioning for that.
Yeah, I know that Myers, Clay Myers was looking into having sheriff's IT people look into and see. The sheriff department has gotten some extra funding for deputies to work, I think it's eight hour shifts on Sunday from such and such time, I think it's from noon to eight or something like that.
But they've been out there?
Uh, yes, and they have been. I listened to them on the scanner, and they're pulling lots of people over. Don't know whether they're getting tickets, but I know they're pulling lots of people over.
As far as trucks goes, it's gonna take personnel either over at the intersection on First and South Clayell Way, or somewhere this way to get those people turned around and back on, yeah, putting it to.
Or actually going to the trucking companies, especially the local ones, you know, and saying, hey, you know.
But they aren't the ones.
Well, well, yeah. Most of those guys that are, that are doing that on a Sunday afternoon are gonna go no farther than North Bend to the off-ramp there, truck down anyway, and go to sleep until Monday morning.
Yeah.
So why don't they sleep somewhere else?
Yeah.
Oh, and, and keep working on it all. Thank you.
We will.
Good boy.
I guess one of the suggestions since last time was to lower the speed limit to twenty-five. From all across Upper Peel, West Side, trying to make people at twenty-five, you aren't gonna wanna go on that road, you may as well stay on the freeway.
That might affect Google as well.
Yes, yes, that's the same.
That's not, that's strange.
So, anyway.
Do reader boards catch enough attention to slow people down while they're reading, or they just run off the road?
Reader boards are a fantastic tool. They, they're just very expensive, right? Uh, cause I know the city of Clayell was trying to get grants, trying to look at a reader board that you can program and actually, you know, program just to say heavy traffic, or alternate route, go this way, whatever. Cause Mike Engelhardt has been looking into that.
So it's, it's gonna take you, it's gonna take you a half hour to get to Easton this way, and it's gonna take you fifty minutes to get there this way. Don't go this way, go that way.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we should ask Jay for some money to do that.
I, I think he's on board with the reader board if they can find a, a funding source.
Well, by Jay, I'm talking to Governor. Yeah, that, that Jay.
He hasn't moved state very long, though. Might have to look at some other state.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other reports?
I'd like to apologize for not being here last meeting. I was doing some schooling.
Oh, well, we excused you.
I didn't excuse you.
And I guess I missed the best meeting of the year.
That's exciting.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you're right. Still feeling bad about it.
Maybe not, maybe not the best, but.
All right. Claims.
I'll move claims against the town be allowed, checks drawn, and the town treasury for the same.
I'll second that. Moving seconded that claims be allowed, checks drawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm curious, thank you. I see in Waupato, they are not paying the person who gathers the public information requests now.
They're not?
No. The, the mayor, well, no, the, the council decided that, oh, they have too many people working there, so the person who used to do it's not doing it anymore.
I hand it all over to the mayor.
In a quick, like a well, Gavin, they don't like mayor either. They wanna be rid of her. All right. Unfazed business. Importance number five ninety-four, short-term rentals. Are we ready to pull the trigger on that one?
I think we are. I, I don't know if Aaron wants this thing, I just highlighted some stuff. Uh, like the, uh, one parking spot per bedroom? That one, I mean, what if there's just one family using two bedrooms, and they all have one car? I mean, what do you, what do you do there? That one, I mean, what if there's just one family using two bedrooms, you know, I have one car, I mean, what do you, what do you do there?
It's just stating how many cars to be.
Okay.
They don't have to have two garages.
But you don't have to have the two parking spots? For each bedroom?
Technically, you have to have two off-street parking anyway.
Per resident?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if there's two, then you got two bedrooms.
Well, how they got it, it's a total required four off-street.
We don't have that kind of room.
No.
We're working on the one that's been drafted for us.
Yeah.
Oh.
You missed last meeting.
I did.
So, your apology is not accepted.
Okay.
However.
I'm gonna phrase it in that.
That was one of the things that I was gonna ask about. Says each short-term rental in the residential zone must have a minimum of one additional off-street parking per rentable bedroom with a maximum of two additional spaces. Is that per bedroom?
That's per property.
Per property, so if they have three or four, we're, we're gonna have more people parking in that neck of the woods than that property.
Because I think it says in addition to the two that you require anyway.
In addition to the, to any other off-street parking required by the regulations.
So you're required to.
On new construction, but we've got a lot of buildings around here that don't have it.
Yeah. I think we can probably rephrase that.
I think that still should be minimum of one to two per rentable bedroom. They, they need to allow parking for what they are renting.
But not necessarily for them, that's what you're saying?
Well, that's in addition to what?
Well, in addition to construction.
So this is off-street, so that street parking could be for the residents that live there.
Okay, so this is purely rentable?
So however many you're renting out, that's the one.
Okay, yeah.
Minimum of one, maximum of two.
Yeah.
The way you have that.
Right, so we'll get rid of the maximum two.
I'd say one per rentable bedroom, period.
Yeah, okay.
Would be my thought.
I, we can certainly make that amendment.
Okay.
Council's in agreement.
So if you got two rentable bedrooms.
You'd have to have two off-street parking.
Wally and Beaver come with Mr. and Mrs. Cleaver. Wally and Beaver aren't driving.
No, you know, that's kind of the way I was thinking.
They have family, they got one car.
One car.
Right, but you may end up with two cars.
But each beggar may have their own car.
Okay.
So I guess it's just.
So, your plan is the worst case there?
Yeah, yeah.
Or a worser case.
The Cleavers, I don't know who the Cleavers are?
No.
Leave it to Beaver on T.V. back in the fifties.
That was working. Yeah, that's, that's okay.
On two B, a separate conditional use permit and business license is required for each short-term rental. That's each physical address, correct?
Right.
Per property. Dumb question, so if a house has four or five rentable bedrooms, at what point are we allowing a short-term rental that should be classed as a motel? At what point does one become a motel instead?
Motel or a vacation rental, is there a difference between Airbnb and?
If they're both paying the motel taxes, which she said these will be, is there really a difference?
Question, that new place in Roseland that just opened, Robin's Nest, sleeps eleven?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
I think it's a gray, I'm not sure if there's a hard definite answer.
And I don't know if this even needs to address it, it was just something as I was reading this, it just kind of dawned on me, at what point is this gonna be a motel instead?
Would the state have a definition for that or?
They might, they just passed an ordinance or a statute this past season that started to touch on the issue. So, and they had some definitions in there, I'm not sure.
So we might be tweaking this in the future or soon, you know.
Yeah, and it could make changes. You know, Lynn, when you said that, generally, I think like for like short-term rentals, Airbnbs, whatever, Airbnb and stuff, usually it's like one group that is renting it, so like you wouldn't be having one family, having two groups, three, like you would in a motel kind of thing.
And I guess we could make that explicit, saying that, I, just, I'd have to think how to phrase that, but say that each property can be only rented to one party at a time.
I never know if that's really that big of a deal, it's just something.
We're thinking that that's a little too explicit.
Yeah.
Because that's where we got ourselves into the rouhaha with the nuisance ordinance.
Right.
Getting too narrowly focused on things that upset people.
Yeah, it was just, it was just a question that come to mind there.
Yeah.
On the four A subsection three, or I, I, we're talking about off-street parking. Do we need to address in this that campers and motor or mobile or camp trailers are not be, are not allowed to be parked on the street during winter months by our ordinance? This off-street park and we have a ten feet wide, twenty feet long, is that gonna be big enough for a motorhome to be parked off-street? In the winter time?
It's still subject to all the other.
Yeah.
Ordinances, yeah.
So I was just wondering, you know, if they're, if they're gonna allow people with campers to rent these in the winter, do we need to?
Well, the other ordinance is still, and it specifically says these are subject to the others. So if they're renting to someone with R.V., then they have, they would have to comply with R.V. parking.
Take up snowmobile trailers, that kind of thing, they're all gonna take up that kind of room you're talking about.
Yeah, well, twenty feet long, that's basically a vehicle.
Yeah, right.
And it's a, you know, just a regular driving vehicle.
Yeah, it's not a trailer, you're talking.
You get some orders, they're basically on mobile, mobile single way. But, okay, that was extending my specidiles a little bit. Have we talked, we haven't talked fees at all yet. So we're gonna have a license fee and inspection fee to come up with on this.
Now, Roseland's got a permit fee, new, it's two hundred and fifty bucks. And then a fifty dollar renewal, but I think it should be more than that.
The permit fee and the business license?
Have better input, because she'll know how much time it takes to do all that.
Oh.
Well, this is requiring a business license, a conditional use permit, an inspection, annual inspection and a short-term license. So it's, it's not gonna be cheap or easy.
Yeah, I think that's probably enough.
We're gonna have five hundred bucks to do it.
You'll recap it.
Well, you should, yeah.
But depending on what you do with it.
And I think the inspection, I think we're probably gonna have to watch that. And we might have to do it, see how they actually comply and do a bi-annual, bi-annually inspection.
Just to keep them compliant.
Just to keep them compliant, yeah.
Well, we are gonna have to have a public hearing on this?
Yeah, so it, it needs to go, you have to give sixty days notice to the state.
I think she already sent it.
And I think she's already sent it, so we have to wait for that. And then, you don't have to have a formal public hearing, but you have to bring it back and have an opportunity to look at it.
Okay, good, thanks Lynn. Any other unfinished business? Moving on, a new business, we have a letter here from Larry Cassidy seeking relief from his water bill. In July, discovered a major water leak near Meter. Six feet onto his property from the meter, it was discovered by Scott.
How many did we adjust his, his water bill down to base rate for that one?
I'll second.
Moved in second and that Mr. Cassidy's bill reduced to base rate for that month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Totally into the realm of that.
Yeah. Alright, the next one comes from Mr. Shox. He's, in a nutshell, needs our help, requesting more time due to imminent heart surgery. If you please give me a new start of day or more time to get things cleaned up. Says, he and Mike, which I assume is Mike Willet that moved a lot of stuff off the land. I will do what I have to do to make things right for the city of South Cleo and the people. Alright, alright.
Can we know the hours?
I, you know, I haven't stuck my head out down the alley for a while. His backyard doesn't look any different, but if he's moved stuff out of the alley, that alley down in the back of Gibbs Old, between Gibbs Old Garage and Pete's Place was almost not passable.
See why we can't give him this sixty days, it would have given the other gentleman.
Alright, I'm not opposed to that, sixty days from today. If you want to respond to that, sixty days from today, thank you very much and they will, we're working with you. We appreciate the letter and the communication. Get well quick. Okay. Any other new business?
Public comment? You want the policy?
Oh, new business, yeah, that policy on the, on the people part of the agenda. The policy that, that puts some sidebars on how long they can speak. Because there have been times and we've had a lot of people in this room and everybody got to talk as long as they wanted to talk. I think most everybody can say what they really got to, I can say whatever I got to say in about a minute and a half, so.
Well, I kinda, I kinda thought the procedure was that with public hearings or whatever, they can come and speak to a piece, but they couldn't get involved in any decisions. They can say what they want to say and then it's up to the council to.
Well, that's, that's what we want to put in policy form, so it doesn't become one of those things.
Just a timeframe, we got so much time to.
Yeah, we're limited, limited their time to say something.
Would it be a policy for council meeting protocol?
Yeah. Dora will, will lay her hands from the Association of Washington Cities or somebody on a policy like that that we can look at to understand it better.
That'd be great.
You want a motion?
Please.
Alright, I'll make a motion if we enact a policy in regards to public speaking with a time limit of five minutes for the speaker.
Or up to five minutes.
Up to, you know, have to.
Why don't we just call it a protocol for council meeting and then we can, at that point, we can make the determination. When we get, when we put it all together, then you guys can look at it and then decide what you want to put. And then, so I get a copy from somebody?
You wanna do that, for a protocol thing?
Do I want to do that?
Yeah, no motion.
Well, that was an escape, wasn't it?
No, Jack.
No, no, no.
No, your motion.
No, just amend, change your motion.
Okay, yeah.
Well, just call it a protocol, how's that?
See, this policy has.
I'll second the protocol.
It'll be broader than just what we're talking about here. That protocol thing will encompass different things at some point in time.
Alright, I'll amend it to that.
Alright. There's a motion on four?
I resecond it.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Jack.
Well said, the first one sounded great too.
Alright, public comment?
I have a public comment, I actually have a question though. So, I was going through.
Yeah, get yourself on camera.
So guys, so I was going through Cleo and does South Cleo have any cul-de-sacs? Do they have any here?
No.
I know that they have the rule that you can't park in them. Why can't you park in a cul-de-sac?
Because there would be no room for a fire truck to turn around, basically.
Or emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles.
Oh, school bus.
Okay. All right. And that answers my question, but also nuisance violation, what does that even mean?
You know what a nuisance is?
Yeah.
If you violate a nuisance.
We do have an ordinance.
Yep.
About.
A lot of different. Junk vehicles, garbage in your yard, stuff like that.
That's what I thought.
It's a broadly written ordinance that addresses a lot of different things. Instead of having a specific ordinance for junk vehicles or each pile of something.
Like junk vehicles, like they just look like.
Or don't run or, and they're just.
They're just parked in the same.
Are you asking for a friend?
I was just curious. Alright, that's it.
There's a, there's a criteria for a junk vehicle.
That's a first.
Really?
You gotta meet.
The camera's gonna ask a question.
Ten criteria for it to qualify as a junk.
What are a few of them?
Or not a junk, I don't know, I don't remember.
I remember one of the old ones.
Asking for a normal scrap guy.
The last guy that asked me.
Not licensed, things like that, inaudible.
Oh, okay.
I didn't even remember the last guy that asked me that twice. Alright, we're adjourned.
I'm Sam.
Thanks for your questions.
Yeah, was I supposed to state my name?
It's alright.
Oh, I'm Sam, I'm from Cleo.
Perfect.
Sam from Cleo, we'll have to remember that.
Sam Cowan from Cleo.
Kavanaugh?
Yeah.
Try to find a few examples, so council loves coming. I'm not sure there's some on there.